Good evening, I call to order this meeting, uh, this work session of the Gladstone City Council for Tuesday, February twenty seven, twenty twenty four. It's five thirty P M. City of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill twenty five sixty, which requires the governing body of the public body, to the extent reasonably possible, to make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide opportunity for members of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony during meetings, to the extent in person oral and written testimony is allowed. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public, both in person and virtually using the Zoom platform. The Zoom platform instructions are on the agenda to the meeting, as this is a work session. Online, in person or online, public comment will not be allowed, but um, the public is invited to attend. Tammy, will you call the role, please?
Counselor Huckabee. Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Riechel.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Roberts.
Present.
Counselor Garlington.
Present.
Mayor Milch.
Present. Let's stand for the flag.
Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
We have three items on our work session agenda tonight. The first is discussion regarding the City of Gladstone unidirectional flushing program. The second is an educational session on system development charges. And the third is a review of a draft municipal code language for creating a youth council. So staff, will you present the first item for us?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. The City Council adopted a goal of completing what was called a unilateral flushing program. And this is a program that the City of Gladstone has never had before. So before we implement that program, our Public Works Director wanted to come and present to you to talk to you a little bit about what this program is, because you will be considering a contract in the next couple of months to complete the work.
All right, thank you, Jackie. Good evening, Council, Mayor. Over the past couple of years, Public Works Department has placed, placed an importance on instituting maintenance programs for sanitary line and storm line cleaning. With these programs in place, we have seen a drastic reduction, reduction in flooding and backups. That's so water system has not been cleaned or flushed in recorded history. Though hydrant flushing was a standard summer practice for several years to benefit years, the benefits of this type of flushing would have been minor to the water system as a whole. The flushing program will take about three years to complete and then performed every five years after that. So we'll start with area one, work through one, two, and three, and then after five years, we'll start back at one, go through two and three. So water system flushing, why do we do it? Well, it's basically just maintenance. Water systems, we can't take and run a jetter through. We can't put a camera in to see the conditions of the pipes. The only way to do it is with the water that's already in the system. So by doing this, it uh, will remove the sediment from inside the pipes. Some of you may have seen when it will flow a hydrant or something like that. It stirs up a bunch of sediment in the pipes and the water gets really discolored. There's nothing wrong with that water. It's just not pleasant looking. This will eliminate that. It will also get rid of unwanted tastes. Our water is actually pretty good water compared to a lot of other systems as far as taste is concerned, but it could improve on that. It will eliminate odors, although we don't have a lot of odors, at least that I'm aware of. It can eliminate those and then obviously discolored water. It also increases the system capacity. So think of a pipeline that is full of debris or full of sediment. And as that sediment collects, it just shrinks the pipeline smaller and smaller. By doing this, it'll get rid of all of that sediment, which actually will give us more capacity within the system. There are two main, main types of water system flushing. One is conventional. I'll go over that. And the other is uh, unidirectional flushing, and I'll go over that. Tammy, can you put up the first? So this is what uh, conventional flushing is. It's simple to do by just opening a hydrant in targeted areas and discharge water until it runs clean. This can take a long time to happen. If you take, if you look at that map that's up there right now, you start at your point, uh, your source, which in this case would be the reservoir by doing, by just opening up a hydrant and running all that water, it's got to flow all of that water to be able to clean that entire area. With this, there is no outside engineering that's needed. Crews can go out, target an area, open up hydrant and flush. It takes a very long time to flush a large area at a time. It requires a large, large amount of water. If you think about trying to get all of that sediment out until the water runs clean out of all those pipes at once, it's going to run a lot of water for a long period of time. Um, and with this, it may not completely clean the pipes. You, you may get the discolor out, but you'll still have a lot of that sediment and corrosion inside the pipes that won't come out with the velocities and everything that are being run um, in that. So if you look in this, um, it shows uh, flows in any given one direction from three hundred and twenty-three gallons per minute to six hundred and seventy-seven gallons per minute. And then your velocities are on the low end of one point three uh, feet per second and on the high end, three point four uh, feet per second. With this slow, with this flow, it may not be enough to, to clean those lines. So when we move to unidirectional flushing, Tammy, can you? Unidirectional flush, flushing eliminates each pipe, pipe segment to create flow in a single direction to quickly and efficiently clean the pipe. It uses higher velocities to clean the pipe. It uses less water than conventional flushing. It's more complicated to do because you have to synchronize everything. You can't just pick a hydrant and then shut off this valve, this valve. You need to know which valves you're shutting off to be able to get that, to, to do that. So that's where the engineering comes into it. And that's what we'll be taking to council in a few months is an engineering contract to sequence everything so that you start at your source and you work your way down. The thing that's nice about that is um, the discolored water or any sediment that's in the line, as you move down, you're getting clean water back behind it and you don't, it's not going to disrupt the, the customers that are behind it. Will this disrupt cus, customers while doing it? Either one of them are going to do that. But the whole idea is, is to get all of that out of the system and um, when we do have fire, fires or anything like that, we need to flow a hydrant, we don't end up with the discolored water that we currently do. This also allows staff to perform valve maintenance and hydrant maintenance. So you're going in and you're opening and closing valves. That's a, a maintenance technique that's used in water. Same thing with fire hydrants. Um, I believe here the fire department used to do that. I don't know that they've done that since I've been here. But by opening and closing those valves, one, we find out what valves don't work. And two, it keeps valves, when you go to close a valve and it hasn't been closed for a long, long time, they'll, you'll still get blow through on them. And by operating that valve, it cleans the valve by taking all of the debris that's on that and it'll screw that you get a good closure with that. And that's no different with a hydrant. When you go to open a hydrant, you want to make sure that you can open the hydrant and then also shut the hydrant off. That's the idea of the valve maintenance and the hydrant maintenance. So in this, obviously you do a much smaller area, um, as you can see here. And one thing that I wanted to note with this is if you look at your, your gallons per minute, you're running roughly fifteen hundred gallons per minute through that whole entire flush, where on the conventional flushing, you're only running a max of six hundred and seventy-seven gallons per minute. And with that, it also brings the velocities up. The velocities in the um, conventional flushing, the high end is three point four, but with the unidirectional flushing, you end up at six point one or somewhere right in there, which cleans it much faster. To run a segment like this would take about a half an hour to clean that entire segment. If you're doing a uh, conventional flushing in that last picture that was shown, that could take hours to flush that out. And so you're running a lot more water with conventional flushing than you are with the unidirectional flushing. Tammy, can you show the video, please? This is a video I found on uh, the internet. Talks about the city of Tiger's uh, unidirectional flushing. I just wanted to have it shown so that you can kind of see what's involved with it. They talk about um, a lot of things with uh, customer service and all that stuff that will have to go along with this. So uh, next steps are with this, this process.
Apologies.
So w- with this program, obviously, obviously, there's going to be a lot of outreach. It's going to have to happen. We'll target, when we target the areas and get the areas figured out as to where, where we're going to start. There'll probably be letters that'll be sent out to everybody, uh, letting them know that the flushing will be in the area, what to expect, how to correct any issues they may have uh, with sediment getting into their line. Typically, if you don't turn on your water while you're doing the flushing, you're not going to get that sediment into your system. But I mean, obviously it happens. We can't pick to the time of day that's perfect for everybody. So um, and then we'll put signage out in areas too. Uh, in that video, they show a, a sign out there. I think putting the signage out in all areas, letting them know um, along with uh, letters and stuff like that should help with a lot of that. But I mean, I expect to get several phone calls about it. It just, it's inevitable. So next steps, um, next step will be to go out for an R F P for engineering services. And then we'll bring that to council after we, we uh, get bids for that. This will be necessary for the engineers to sequence the system so that we clean, clean it in a systematic way so that we don't have issues uh, you know, further on as, as we go through it. The main portion of this will be a one-time expense. But there will be some minor expenses afterwards. If, if there's problems with valves and we have to skip stuff, we've got to go back to the engineers to find out which way to go about doing the sequencing after that. So there will be a few hiccups uh, with this. The good thing is, is once we get through the entire system, we'll know what those hiccups are. We can fix those hiccups and not have any more issues the next time we go around to do the flushing. So that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
And just to close on that, what that means is that they will train our employees after this flushing program so that then the city public works crews will be able to do it in the next five years. So that's the one-time investment. We told the residents of Gladstone, for the past six years, we're investing in our infrastructure. This is an example of utility dollars at work to improve the efficiencies of our system. But making sure that this is something that internally we can do after we do this first time was very important to us as well.
So just to clarify, Director Cana Peroli, the only part we have to go out for a bid for and, and, and involve somebody outside our city public works is just this initial engineering and sequencing of the valves. After that, Public Works is the one doing the, the flushing. We're not hiring someone else, an outside firm to do that.
That is correct. And they'll work side by side with us, especially during the first set, the first, probably the first year of doing it. So that staff is trained, they know what they're doing. And if there are any issues, we can rectify those at that time. So travel, uh, staff will also be getting trained on how to do this as we go on with it.
Okay. And you, you mentioned three areas that we would be doing. Uh, we're used to in this city for leaf pickup and uh, street sweeping like seven or something different areas in the city. So is there a different division of how this is?
Our system is broke up into three uh, areas. We have a low zone, a high zone, or a low zone, a medium zone and a high zone. I would anticipate that that's how we will break this up. It all depends on how the, the flushing routine will work.
And the low, medium, higher are basically the elevation of the city?
Correct. The, okay. The low zone is basically from Oakfield Road down to the river. That's the low zone. The medium zone's from Oakfield Road up about halfway up the hill. And then the high zone is obviously the highest points in town.
Okay. Other questions from counselors?
So um, like you showed that great video on a tiger. Now, when we get bids or you're going to go out for bids or whatever, is the size of the city obviously make a difference?
Uh, it's the size of the system.
Okay, it's system. Okay. So yeah, smaller cities.
Smaller cities, smaller system.
Okay.
Obviously less.
Do we have any ballpark or that'll come later?
Uh, that'll come later. I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you.
But you hope that engineers that know our system will want to bid on this because that will help bring the costs down tremendously as well.
And that comes out of the, the water, our water bill money? Is that, I guess, the best way to put it?
It comes out of the budget. It's budgeted for. Um, I believe this is under contractual services is where I put this in the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Garlington is taking notes and preparing a question.
Okay. I had a couple, I have a couple of questions just because I don't know a lot about all of this. Is this something you could potentially find leaks in? Um, I got that one. And what do you anticipate as from the timeline? From the R F P bring, uh, bringing the R F P to us to come, to beginning the project? And how long does it actually take to flush all of those areas?
All very good questions. Um, as far as finding leaks, no, you wouldn't really be able to find leaks in the system from this. We may end up creating a few leaks, but for the most part, uh, you won't be able to find leaks. The other question, which, what was the second part?
From the.
Oh, how long?
The timeline.
Yeah, so if we get an R F P in front of council, let's say, May. The RF, depending on who gets the R F P, if it's our uh, engineering that we've used in the past that did our uh, master plan, it would be a much quicker process. But I would say the goal would be to start flushing in October-ish. We want it, we don't want to flush during uh, when summertime because of, because of high flows.
Okay.
Because everyone's using water during the summer. So you tend to do it, you know, spring, uh, fall is the time that you would normally do that. As far as time, I'm not a hundred percent sure how long it's going to take. That'll be more of a question with the engineering as far as how long it's going to take. Where the lower section of Gladstone is obviously a much bigger section than, than the medium zone and the high zone. That one's going to take the most time. But I.
But when I say time, because I really don't know this, or I wouldn't ask, uh, is, are we talking like a week per zone or a month per zone?
Oh, no.
Oh.
It'll, it'll be broken out into years.
Okay.
So it'll, over three years, the idea is, is to, to complete the entire system in three years.
Okay.
And then we'll take a year off or two years off and then we'll start over again uh, with the first area that we started in.
Okay. All right. And then.
When we get our proposals in though, Darren, it should have a timeline. They should be able, when you award the contract, you should see in, in their proposal how long they estimate for it to take, but it could be two to three years.
So we're going to hire someone for two or three years? I'm sorry. Okay.
No, so they'll come in and they'll do, they'll basically create, we'll call it a map. It's going to be a little bit more involved than just a map.
Okay.
That will have the areas where to start and where's flush one, flush two, flush three, and it'll go all the way through and sequence all of that. And then, once we get through the first go-round with that, our staff will have all of that information and be able to use that going forward. So the, the contract is for the initial, which uh, will be the sequencing and everything like that. And then if there are any other additional things that come up, like I said, if we have a valve that's stuck or will not close and we've got to reroute things, we'll have to go back to engineering for that.
Oh, but they're not actually showing you how to do the flow thing.
They, they will be on site, site with our staff uh, in, in the beginning of this.
In the beginning.
Yes, but they will not be with our staff the entire time.
Okay. And do we have money in case we have uh, valve or hydrant repairs?
Yes.
And that's coming from where?
That would come from capital.
From capital. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Cook, you have your hand up.
Yes, yeah, apologies. It took me a while to unmute. Um, I just wanted to clarify. So once we have this information from engineering, um, we have a kind of order of operations and we have a map of, you know, what valve may be closed um, to what effect. Essentially, that information will serve us in perpetuity, correct? Like, unless there's a um, a system-wide change, once we have this information, this is um, information that we can use to self uh, maintain our system forever, right?
That is correct. The only thing that would change is if there, let's say a new subdivision came in and they would have to route that in with it. But for the most part, once this is done, we'll be able to use the same route, the same everything for many, many years to come.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I'd like to know where that new subdivision is going to come, Darren.
I'm really excited to hear about this. You know, I, uh, as someone who plans to live in Gladstone for the rest of my dang life, I'm really excited to hear about continued investment in infrastructure. Thank you.
I had one more question. Um, I noticed the water just flowing out into the street and going down in the, in the storm drains. Is there anything we can do with that water? Uh, you know, you talk about the spring and the fall. Obviously, we're not going to be using it to irrigate people's lawns, I guess. So any, any suggestions on that? Or is it just something that, whatever it takes, it takes?
I think for the most part, with the amount of gallons that are being flowed at one time, you know, you, it's not something you can just go set on a lawn and, and let it.
Yeah.
Irrigate the lawn or something like that. It'd end up tearing most of that up. So unfortunately, that's not the case. Typically, it's, I don't want to say it's a waste of water, but because you're using the water to, to clean the system. But yeah, there is an expense with that. It's much less with unidirectional flushing than it would be with conventional flushing. If you look at like in that one diagram to, to clean that all of that area, it could take hours to clean all that, where a typical segment for unidirectional is about a half an hour and you'll have that segment clean. So there is water that, and that's why we do it in the spring and the fall is because we have high flows with residents, with irrigation and everything else. We don't want to do it in the summer and, you know, put strain on our system. So we do it when there isn't as much flow. People are not using as much water.
Now, and you probably don't know, able to make this comparison, but we've talked a lot about inflow and infiltration and the concern that money, uh, that rainwater that's falling on people's roofs and on a big impermeable parking lot surfaces is getting into the sewer system. We're working on fixing that. But is the amount of water that we're going to uh, pull out of the system by doing this anywhere comparable to what we would have in a big rainstorm or because it's so localized one area at a time? We're not going to get a call from, from the sewer facility and saying, what are you doing to us?
No, so um, hopefully we'll have most of those things corrected. But I mean, the ones that aren't corrected, yeah, it's going to end up going to the treatment facility, but it's not going to be at a high volume like you would if you had a major rainstorm or anything like that.
Good to know. All right. Well, this is very helpful. So we will be seeing a proposal, an R F P coming to us. Oh, 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 I'm sorry. Go ahead, Counselor Riechel.
I also had to unmute. It's been a tech-heavy, difficult day. To kind of piggyback on your question about reusing or uses for that water, um, I'm kind of curious, how does that water that we use to flush get paid for? Like how, you know, the water that we're using to flush the systems, are we, is the city paying for that water? Or does that come from our personal home bills? Or how does that work?
No, it, it, it would come from the city. The city would be paying for that. It's uh, we pay bulk water from N C C W C. That's what would be used for this. The residents and property owners would not see an increase in their water bill whatsoever from this.
Okay, thank you.
This is one of those where you could seriously drive by and say, your utility tax dollars at work. And that's the kind of thing that they want to see is where their money is going.
Yeah, all, all these little projects take so much time to prepare for. And you know, we put the increases in the rates in effect five years ago or six years ago. So that gap in time is, is, you know, that's what results in those kinds of comments. You know, they raised our rates, but they're not doing anything. We are doing a lot.
We are, we've got four projects going on in public work. So now you're going to start seeing the results of all of that work.
Very good. So uh, in a, in a meeting or two, you will bring us something and, well, you're going to put out the R F P. It's approval of a contract that would be coming to us, uh, administrative best you suggested in May.
Yes.
And then uh, then we'll see the project begin. They'll, the engineers will do their work and maybe by fall, we'll start to see this happen.
That is the plan.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right. Helpful information. Thank you. Let's move on to item two, which also involves Public Works Department.
Thank you, Mayor. System development charges is something that you hear a lot associated recently with affordable housing. And we thought it would be good to just bring some information to you on what system development chargers are and what they can be used for, because this isn't something that the city arbitrarily says, we're going to charge you this amount to build this home in this location. And so what you have in your packet is, Darren's going to go over the staff report. And we also have some information from the state on system development charges because there are statutory requirements on what we can uh, charge for them and what they can be used for. And then also in your packet, you have a copy of chapter thirteen point sixteen. So the city does have in its code system development fees. And in the last attachment is an actual example, if someone was to come in and want to build a single-family residential home on a piece of bare land, how it would be calculated out and what the cost would be. So we. So we have Kristen Bowen with us tonight. She's our administrative operations coordinator in public works. She is the one. That gets to calculate all of these charges. And so I'll have Darren start by talking a little bit about. System development charges and then Kristen's going to talk to you a little bit about the calculations. And what she's seeing from a high level happening in the Gladstone community.
All right. Um, a system development charger at SDC is a one-time fee imposed on new development. To equitably recover the cost of expanding infrastructure capacity to serve new customers. SDC revenue is restricted by statute and SDC revenue must be used to provide needed capital improvements. SDCs can represent a valuable tool for cities to ensure that public facilities keep pace with new development. By dis- distributing the costs of increased services on new development, not on existing development. The city currently charges SDCs for water, wastewater collections. Wastewater treatment, which is a pass-through to either Oak Lodge or to Wes. Uh, stormwater, transportation and recreation. Uh, the fees may be reimbursed by new development for a portion of unused infrastructure capacity. And or an improved fee for planned infrastructure. The fees may not in, may not include an improvement fee. Portion if there is significant existing capacity. SDC revenues may be levied and used for capital costs, but not for ongoing facility system maintenance. Or for projects that either fix existing system deficiencies or replace existing capacity. Um, the S- SDC methodology, along with correlating at fees from the city's master fee schedule. Are used to calculate SDCs for both residential and commercial properties. So. We can't use SDCs to do a maintenance part project. It's only new infrastructure. Um, if a developer comes in and they need to have uh infrastructure put in. To be able to build their house or to build the subdivision that'll never happen. Um, uh, we can use those SDC fees to, in lieu of that. For them to be able to put in that infrastructure to connect to that, our systems. We wouldn't charge them the SDCs. It'd be in lieu of. So it's not, it's. It's not always just for what we already have. There's not a lot of properties that we do that with. But there are chant, or there are times where we'll have some infill projects and not have um the system there for them to connect to. And therefore, we use their SDCs to build that infrastructure for them. Um, I'm going to have Kristen go over the um, how we get to um. Calculate the SDCs for a single-family residence. Um, like I said, it's, there's a methodology that's been put in place. Uh, with that methodology, it explains every, I mean, it's like a step-by-step process as. To what you do to be able to come up with those fees. So I'll turn it over to Kristen. She can kind of explain some of that. She knows it a lot better than I do. And I'll let her go from there. Kristen?
Hello, everyone. Um, so basically with um, like a single-family residence um, that we see here in town. This um workup is bare land, which we don't have a ton of in town. Um, so it is rare that we actually collect um, you know, full SDCs like this. Um, but in the case that you were building, um, you know, even dividing a lot and putting another house on a lot. You would be responsible for another set of SDCs for that property. Um, when a developer comes into the Public Works Office or submits plans, um, we take the information that's off those plans. As well as usually have a conversation with the developer regarding the project. Um, and put the methodology into place. So for a single-family home, um. Our master fee schedule is based off of um, a single-family home for SDCs. So it's probably the easiest calculation because you just kind of go right down the list. Um, and it's just. When you get into other housings that you start. Deviating away from the, the basics that are here. Um, transportation, that's, you know, the adding capacity to the streets. Um, so use cars driving on the roadways and sidewalks, all of those things. Um, water is pretty straightforward. It's mainly based on your meter size. Um, which we have various meters that are available for properties. Um, but the standard for um, a single-family home or most residents is a three-quarters uh inch meter. Um, and that is just a standard fee that is um, set pretty standard along the industry. That we have with um, different cities and municipalities. Um, we do charge on here, there's a meter dig-in um fee, which is actually the fee that is for the Public Works Crew to go out there. Um, and to actually um, do the connection to the main. Um, we don't allow. Um, connection of our system for the initial connection to be done um by contractors. So that's what that covers. Um, sewer collection is the city's collection. Um, and that's based off of a UD, uh EDU rate. Um, and one of, basically one EDU is a single-family home. Um, on the sheet, you'll see on there that there is um also permit fees that are put on there. And that's just our standard right-of-way permit um that allows for the opening of the street. Um, the next one is the sewer treatment and that is a pass-through charge. Um, for either Wes or Oak Lodge uh sewer districts. Um, those, those charges go a hundred percent to those um treatment facilities and are not Gladstone fees. Parks, um, still very, very similar. It's an RPE for um. Is there a calculation use that basically of the use of the parks, right? The draw that you're going to um, add to the parks. Whether it's usage or um, just the space in general, kind of. I know it's kind of vague. Um, and then stormwater is based off of um, the impervious area. The city of Gladstone has a standard of three thousand square feet for a single-family homes. Um, and that is pretty much usually three thousand square feet for a single-family home is a lot. Um, so that usually only changes um, if you're doing more of a commercial or adding like a triplex or duplex. And you end up at the total of forty-four thousand fifty-six dollars, um, which those fees are collected prior to. Um, the release of building permits and um, yeah.
So when we're talking bare land, that's a property that does not have a sewer stubout or never has. No water stubout or never has. So i- it's just a lot with nothing that's been attached to it. If it has had SDCs in the past, those SDCs would then transfer. But out of, in this case, in the scenario that we brought here, it's just bare land with no, no infrastructure ever brought to that property.
So a couple of things to keep in mind is. All of these fees are in our master fee schedule. So twice a year, we bring a master fee schedule to you. So we have that master fee schedule that Kristen refers to when she's doing the calculations for this. Uh, one of the things that we will be working on with Wes. Is whether or not they want us to continue to calculate those for them. Or if they want to calculate them and then we just enter that amount into the application as well. When we go through our budgeting process, we have, as you recall, what's called capital outlay projects. And listed in there. And so if you were to pull the, the pages of our capital outlay information in the current budget. It shows that in our roads and streets department, there are system development reserves. Of approximately six hundred thousand dollars. In the sewer capital outlay, there are system development reserves approximately four hundred and sixty-nine thousand. In the water re- uh, system development reserves, there's about six hundred and fifty-seven thousand. And in the stormwater, there's about one point two million in reserves. These are system development charges that have been collected for time or years over. And they're in a reserves account because they can only be used for certain projects that will qualify for that. And most of you have probably heard that growth is supposed to pay for growth. And in Gladstone, we don't have a lot of growth because we don't have an urban growth boundary. But what we are experiencing is uh, the fruition of middle housing coming to. Because of House Bill two zero zero one that was passed a couple of years ago. And so Kristen is starting to see more people coming in and having conversations about. What if I turn my garage into an accessory dwelling unit? Or what if I want to build a triplex? A duplex or a cottage cluster? And so one of the things that we kind of wanted to get some guidance from you on tonight is that. We believe with these new middle housing laws, that maybe the system development chargers should be reduced. For those that are trying to build affordable housing or to meet those middle housing requirements. We've noticed that our neighboring cities, uh Oregon City, Milwaukee, West Lynn. They are reducing their system development charges for qualified projects. And if tonight enough of you give us a consensus, we would like to do some researching. And come back to you perhaps in June when we update our master fee schedule again to give some recommendations. On how to reduce those system development charges. So it makes it more affordable for people to accomplish what they're trying to do. So with that, that's what we had to present to you tonight. If you had any questions, we're happy to answer them.
All right, I think Counselor Alexander has a question.
Well, that's when I read this earlier today, that was my first thing on there was, like you said, this is for a vacant lot and that would be forty-four thousand. And I thought like the same thing, uh, not, the ADUs are like over on one, a certain street. They want to put another little house in the back. I just said, shouldn't it be uh, adjusted to size? I mean, if you're putting a one-bedroom, one shower, one, you know, shouldn't that not cost this as much as it does for a whole vacant lot? Is that what you want to do? Is that new housing bill help us be able to do that? Or does it restrict anything?
Um, so currently, if someone was to want to put an ADU or whether it be um detached or attached. Um, it would be approximately um fifteen thousand dollars, give or take.
Okay.
Um, so the way that we do that is um, your property does get transferred in a sense to a use of multifamily. Um, so you credit back the SDCs at the current rate for the single-family home. And then you calculate it as a multifamily. Um, and that is what um, our methodology has for change of use. So um, it, it's all driven by the use of the property. Um, and the capacity that comes along with those. So um, if somebody was to want to do in a small ADU, it would be approximately fifteen thousand dollars. If somebody was wanting to do a triplex, um, depending on the property and the other scenarios. Um, it would, it would fluctuate.
So it would go up on size or air go down?
Um, no, it would go up. Um, so we have, um, we have several of those that are. Popping up, you know, as far as potential projects. Um, so if you were to keep like the single-family residence and then do a duplex, depending on the square footage of each unit. Um, it would, it could vary. It could be as high as over a hundred thousand. Um, as well as like a duplex could be possibly anywhere from thirty-six uh thousand, depending on the size. Um, to close to eighty-five. So you have, but all of those things come into different usages of the original property.
Okay, thank you. And, and those numbers you, you gave examples of would be the number for the total project. So that if it's, if you divide it up per unit, they would be comparable or perhaps smaller than what, than a typical. Single-family home at a twenty-five hundred square foot home or something.
Yeah, so, well, and a lot of these, so for example, um, there's a project in town. That they have a single-family residence and they're putting a triplex.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they, the square footage of each unit of the triplex is under a thousand square foot. So they get a little bit of a differential for that as far as it being a smaller sized unit. Um, so that type of a project um, was over a hundred thousand dollars for SDCs. Um, but if you were to separate the lot for say, and not have a credit from the single-family home and just do a triplex. Um, it would, it would probably be a little bit more closer to a hundred and fifty.
Okay, so you do have a mechanism in place already to get some adjustment. This is not just the flat rate for any kind of, you know, regardless of size. You have something in place. Good.
The SDC methodology does accommodate for that, but surrounding cities are. Taking further steps to make it affordable for this smaller development.
Okay, so we're not saying that what we have in place already is enough of a discount to encourage this. That this kind of a number could be enough of a disinfect, disincentive for somebody to say, oh, it's not worth it to try to put this in. Uh, so that's helpful. Understand that distinction. Uh, Counselor Roberts, did you have a question?
Well, just kind of to your last point there, I know um, we've received some communications about it. But do we typically find our existing SDCs to be a prohibitive factor? And continued development? Is that a stopping factor for people?
Yes, it can be. A lot of people are shocked by the ADU number.
Mm-hmm. If you had to put numbers to it, what do you kind of see through in a year where you would see people back out?
Um, I would say probably, I mean, so we've had a, a large influx in requests for SDCs. But in the, in the last couple of years, I would say probably a third of them decide to alter their plans. Um, so that they don't get hit as hard.
Certainly. And then as it stands now, are our existing fees sort of in line with neighboring cities?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I guess the question I have is kind of vague in my head, but. To uh Administrator Betts's point, what is? What's the benefit or the not? What's, what is the ballpark figure you're talking about spending? Are we? I'm not sure. I, I, when you're talking about going out and asking.
Well, typically what we would, if you're talking about the reduction in system development charges.
Yes.
It would be for middle housing and we would come back to a proposal. And I think the biggest one is probably the accessory dwelling units because they're smaller. That's a lot of money for somebody to pay that wants to just convert. So that they could either rent it out or have somebody staying there. So I know Wes also has a reduced rate for accessory dwelling units. And so we would look to see what Wes charges, how Milwaukee calculates theirs, how Oregon City calculates that. And we would bring back to you um, a proposal to consider and look at. We're not talking about waiving or deferring. We're talking about reducing just for certain middle housing types of development.
Hmm, um. And there are, there are cities, Kristen, you said that are already doing some reductions?
Yes.
And how much did you think that this um? Looking into it would cost?
Uh, staff time, just probably for the next couple of months. I, I don't.
You're not hiring some?
No, this would be Kristen making phone calls to her neighbors and writing down costs.
Okay.
And us doing kind of a comparison.
Okay. And you're, you have time for that?
I always have time for Jackie's.
So kind. Okay.
Counselor Alexander?
So is there, to reduce this, is there any sense these, all these initiatives are getting, you know, the housing bills and all that? Is there any incentive for the cities? Does the state have anything to say about it or just our city alone?
The, the city has the ability to adjust its system development charges. But we would bring criteria to you so that it wasn't just for, for anybody. Uh, the governor has made affordable housing an initiative. And we know that there's people in Gladstone that would like to be able to convert. And we don't want that to be cost prohibitive. Where we get concerned is when we get an application for a triplex. Is our infrastructure going to be able to sustain that service and provide for it? So you want to make sure that they're paying in for that capacity there. But we also want to be fair and reasonable. And we're not saying that the council has to adopt the reduction, but we think, we recommend that we at least look at that and consider. It as an option when we bring back the. it as an option when we bring back the master fee schedule in June for you to update.
One of the things I recall and um Planning Commissioner Chair Natalie Smith is here, you may have been to this. It seemed to me that the city council and the planning commission had a joint meeting together one time where we talked about this procedure for how these are calculated. And they are based on our master plans and all the cost of various projects associated with their master plans. And then, you know, you divide a factor in there to kind of get a dollar amount that you use. Um, and uh if that's the case, our parks master plan, for example, lists a lot of potential modifications and improvements to our parks that could happen. So we're collecting from, and and we have been collecting for many years because you talked about all these reserves that are there. These monies that we're putting aside. We're not really expanding out beyond our boundaries in that kind of expansion and adding new infrastructure. What are the kinds of opportunities that we will have to spend these reserves? Where will that money be used in the future? Will, can we at some point say we will use it to make an improvement at a specific park that's already in the master plan or uh enlarge the capacity of pipes that already are flowing under a street somewhere?
Yeah, so in the Parks Master Plan, it has a detailed list of projects in that master plan. And it also has a percentage of what SDCs can be used for particular projects. Um, I'm not sure that it's a hundred percent that way in the water storm and sanitary master plan. Uh, but it's anything that is non-maintenance related. So going out and uh, for example, slurry ceiling, ceiling streets, that's a maintenance activity. You would not be able to use that. Um, for the flushing program for the water system, you would not be able to use those SDCs for that type of a program. But if you needed to upsize infrastructure, um, that's where that money could be used at.
For instance, in the future, we want to do improvements on Portland Avenue in in line with the revitalization plan. But we need to upsize our infrastructure underneath before we do it. So potentially some of those system development chargers could help offset costs for that.
Okay, and and before the meeting, Darren, I asked you a question about the, there was a project before you were here on East Clarendon Street. We had a community development block grant project that improved two blocks of East Clarendon. It enlarged our water main substantially along there, added sidewalks, and then had to put new streets over everything it had dug up. Uh, we spent over a million dollars for just two blocks. Um, but uh there's one street where I know right now we have a substantially larger water main and probably, you know, won't have any trouble. If, if, if that turned out to be a whole row of duplexes or or triplexes along there, that system could handle it. But there might be other streets or other neighborhoods in the city that couldn't right now that could benefit by the same kind of water main or sewer main or something improvement. And those are the kind of things then that these fees could be used for.
That is correct.
Okay. Well, I am glad, Kristen, we we not, you know, you work behind the scenes. You're one of those who haven't come to us before. So I appreciate uh your information on on this tonight and and the ongoing work that you're doing. And I think what is really helpful too is that Public Works is getting direct input on these requests to Planning Department about, you know, what can I do and what will this cost? And what impact will it have on our infrastructure? Because with that communication taking place, we'll be better able to make those decisions sometime in the future on where these STC funds should be spent. And I appreciate, Darren, you're reminding us that we can't just take a hundred percent of it and throw it at a project. We're limited to a certain percentage of it coming from that and a certain percentage coming from the users who pay into our, our system already through their utility rates. Because those kinds of improvements don't just benefit the new construction. If you, uh, I, I was watching a webinar the other day on housing and and somebody made the point, if you have green space on the edge of your city and somebody puts in a new sub-development there, uh subdivision, and you make them pay fees for, for the pipes, the pipes benefit them only. Then they hook into the rest of the system. But if people put triplexes and duplexes in our existing neighborhoods and we say, well, we need to improve our capacity, everybody benefits from that. Because that is going to improve things for everybody. So everybody should share in the cost. And the SDCs need to be just proportional to that new growth. So this is helpful information to us. Uh, if you do that research and bring it back to us, we'll be able to make some good decisions, informed decisions, having a better understanding of this. Uh, are there any other questions or uh do I sense a consensus that we want to move forward, getting more information and and exploring what it would look like? I see a head nod from Counselor Riechel and a thumbs up. Okay, and and Counselor Alexander. So, okay, I, this has been productive. Thank you so much. Uh, you know, it comes up now and then. Uh, I, it's good to know that when you first make an inquiry about doing a project, you can get your STC numbers right away. And then you can make the kind of decisions, Kristen, that you said, where you say, gee, if I modify my project in this way, I'll reduce my SDC substantially. Is it really worth it to me to pay the bigger fee for doing the dream project? When I could do a, you know, a slightly lower project and save a lot of money? So I'm glad you're able to provide that information right from the outset. It will make sure that people are feeling good about how they're investing in their own property. All right, let's move on to item number three. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, well, I think. Oh, you know, one more question occurred to me. Uh, you talked about the sewer district having its own fees. Um, are there any other special districts like a school district, for example, that charges an SDC? Uh, I know around here our enrollment is low. We have plenty of capacity for higher enrollment in our schools. But do you quote people a school district SDC at all? No, okay. Thank you. Okay, so for schools or libraries or something like that, we're not, we're not doing it that way. All right. Okay, item three is um, and here's where we want to say thank you to Counselor Roberts and Counselor Huckabee, if she were here, uh, of the work that they have put in on this next item for us. So, uh Administrator Betts.
Yes, I think the staff report very well explains where we are in the process with this. I think the new item since the last time we talked was that Counselor Roberts, Counselor Huckabee and myself, we did meet with uh the high school principal. And we also met with leadership and Spanish teacher to discuss the program. It's, it's been a great process working with Counselor Roberts and Counselor Huckabee. And what you have in your packet tonight is um uh revised, revised drafts that we've been working on. And so I'm gonna let Counselor Roberts say anything that he thinks in particular we might be wanting to call out to the city council.
Sure, uh truly, I think the thanks goes to City Administrator Betts for drafting this language for us. Um, she came back to us with something that was fabulous and uh Counselor Huckabee and I redlined it all the way through. There was a lot of fabulous things, but it was just minor changes. And so what you see before you is really the culmination of all of her hard work come together here. Uh, I've been happy to be a part of this process and very excited to see where it goes from here. Uh, it was my hope that we would bring this to a work session first, just so the rest of the council had an opportunity to look at this language. Uh, we'd have a broad discussion now, hoping that at a general city council meeting, we'd be able to push it through unanimously. So my hope is that we just have any discussion here that we need to and go from there. So thank you.
All right, I hope you've each had an opportunity to review it and kind of understand, you know, what we've talked about. We had two or three work sessions uh already, uh hearing from other cities. So you know what other cities are doing and what it could be. And I just wonder if there are questions or comments or observations on the draft language that uh you'd like to share. All right, Counselor Garland, what a surprise you have a.
I know. Well, you know, right now I'm working on two different sets of bylaws with uh two different organizations. So it's this was right up my alley when I started reading it. So on page three, two, you talk about the consists of seven uh youths. I thought that we were going to talk about not limiting how many kids we had.
It was a conversation that we had, but ultimately we decided that relative to the size of our city as well as the participation we're looking to seek, seven was a more obtainable number. Gives them an opportunity to sit on the dais as a whole organization.
So is there a space to say uh your membership is different than your board?
No. If I understand you're correct. If I understand your question correctly, that would be that there is only one. There's one organization, there are seven voting members, there are seven participating members. That is all the same.
I'm not, I don't think I like that, but um, we can talk about that. Um, it says here, attend to Gladstone School District. Okay, so membership and under A, um attend reside within the city limits and or attend Gladstone High School or a homeschooled equivalent. I don't know if that specifies that that homeschool equivalent needs to be in Gladstone.
It has a residential.
Be the legal language, kind of the residing and how that must still also be a residing resident.
Yeah, it ju, it looks a little open to me. Um. I wasn't very, it wasn't very clear on D. After interviews are conducted, city council will by majority vote. I think it should be to consider approval of the city council liaison, city council or liaison. But it made it sound like we, they were voting on somebody from here as opposed to it saying approval of the youth council member to the city uh city council liaison. It, it just needed a little bit more clarity on it. On E, um, I wasn't sure about second term rather than using the language additional. And the reason that I say that is if somebody came into into the program as a freshman, um, it would be easy to pass them and they were just a dynamic individual. It would be easy to move them along as they got um as, as they moved through their high school years. Um, but I can also see where and I think that would be at the discretion of, I was going to see, I can see where that might then take up a seat for four years that someone else doesn't get a chance to do if you limit this to seven to seven youths. Um. On the next page, three, three, number B, it does not talk about uh all social media posts I wrote, all social media posts will need to need city council liaison approval. Um, I think it's important that there be a second uh set of eyes on that. Social media can get really ugly and um it can be really.
Which, which paragraph of that?
I'm sorry, B, communications coordinator.
Okay, so it's twenty B or oh XX, that's right. None of them are numbered the way it is. Okay, that's why, yeah, you can't, you can't be more clear.
Uh, communications coordinator under item B, I was thinking that there need to be an adult set of eyes on what's being posted on um, the social media if I'm not sure what social media accounts they would be using. Did you ever thought about that?
So there is a social media policy, which is why we have it mentioned there. And I would be the one that would have to be approving anything that's posted on social media.
Can we add that language though? So there's not a question?
It's in the social media policy that they will be getting a copy of.
I understand.
And just to answer your other question is that uh we would set up a social media account specific for the youth council so that was their password and username. But again, nothing could be posted until it it been passed by, uh approved by the city administrator on there.
Okay. Um. And I'm, I'm only bringing this up as keeping in mind that I'm just that next set of eyes looking at something.
That was our hope bringing it here.
Okay. And why does I? Oh, under meetings in quorum, a majority. Does your quorum work require one of your two co-chairs?
No. I think that that's the same public meeting law that applies.
Yeah, it doesn't apply to any of our other public meeting laws. So, yeah.
Um. And then I, I, I saw that uh youth, youth council membership responsibilities on E at the bottom there. And I um I go back to this limiting how many people can be in this group. Um. And I think the reason that I say that is I, I saw what wonderful things these other groups did by allowing everyone in and then figuring out that ebb and flow before we say seven people and quite frankly, possibly end up with people that may not be the best fit to actually lead the group, but may be better suited as um, uh, uh as somebody that's just a helper in the group, somebody that, I mean, if you're talking about, yeah, I guess I go back to with Happy Valley, they were talking about how they choose a project and then work on that project. Well, I can tell you seven people working on a project is really light.
So let me expand on that a little bit.
Okay.
Because seven is manageable, fifteen is not in Gladstone, let's say. And part of what we're proposing is that after they are appointed and they would be appointed in May of this year, that we would have a special meeting in August with the council liaison, myself and the members to prepare an annual work plan that could include projects. Part of their role would be to solicit other individuals to help. And so that's how you get the broader youth participation. But it's the seven members that are engaging the rest of them. At least that was the thought for this first year in this kind of pilot program. Quite honestly, we may only get two applicants. We don't know what we're going to get. And so we're open to being flexible on that in the future. But we're not saying that no other youth can participate because we would encourage them to be part of the actual projects that the youth are trying to get involved with.
And that's why I looked at it too. It's analogous to the uh, the advisory committee that we have for the former senior center, now community center. They have, that's limited to seven people. But when we have our annual volunteer recognition, half of that senior community center building is filled with people who volunteer for projects that come out of that, out of that program. Uh, you know, they do the um bazaar in the, in the wintertime and food distributions throughout the years and other programs at other times. We've now got summer concerts going on. So I think these seven leaders uh acting sort of in the capacity like analogous to the senior center advisory board will, will work to organize. And when you said that the difference, your first comment, the difference between their group and their membership. Well, I think the membership are, as Administrator Betts said, the people they can recruit to do projects. So if the seven of them decide, we want to uh help with the Halloween festival or we want to host uh a forum on uh, um, you know, opioid pre, uh, prevention, they can recruit from their, from their peers uh or even from adults, maybe even, I don't know, uh, to make those projects happen. But what we're looking at now is, is a leadership group. Uh, the thing that concerned me the most uh on the numbers was what if we got eight applicants and we can only pick seven? That means that our job is to basically say, one of you isn't going to be on it. But to offer the option to say, even though you're not, even though those of you who didn't get chosen tonight are going to be on the official council, there will be opportunities for you to be involved in the work that the youth council hopes to do as they develop their work project. And so um, thinking about it that way helped to alleviate some of the same concerns that I had about the numbers of people involved.
Yeah, and I, I guess I, I think moving along that line, I think it would uh Uh, yeah, and I, I, I guess I, I think moving along that line, I think it would, uh. If there was language that would allow all alternates. That were invited to meetings, that should say somebody should quit for whatever reason, they move out of this, the district or something. That you've got another person ready to go, like an alternate juror kind of thing.
Yeah.
Um, I, you know, I think not to close that off. Because quite frankly, you know, youth can sometimes change their mind on a dime. Or it sounded like a really good idea, but unfortunately it's on the same night as my practice, you know, that kind of thing. So I, 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 I would open that language up possibly to have alternates. Right off the get-go so that you're not short-sighting yourself or constantly, or not, not constantly. Once or twice just trying to catch somebody up sometimes is a lot of work, so, um, that might be something that you think about.
Um, one issue that I was, oh, on the issue of the membership, we talked about, uh.
Where are you?
Uh, let's see, on the first page, the first sub-paragraph A. Um, high school students and/or attend Gladstone High School or a homeschooled equivalent. Um, what about a Gladstone resident who attends a private school? Um, I don't know if the, I believe that the Seventh Day Adventists have a private school, it may only go up to grade eight. I don't know if it goes beyond that. Rivergate, okay, um, so maybe if they go to that school, they wouldn't be eligible. But if somebody were to attend, uh, another private school, but basically, you know, was a Gladstone resident. Would we be, would we allow them? So could we say, uh, and/or attend a public or private high school? Or a homeschooled equivalent, or is that too broad? What if they live in Gladstone and they transferred to the Oregon City School District and go to Oregon City High School?
Resides within the city limits of Gladstone.
Well, but, but you can reside in Gladstone and ask for a transfer to a school in another public school district. Um, my grandchildren live in Oregon City and they attend Gladstone schools because they have open enrollment policies in Gladstone schools. And I think a high school student could live here and go to school, uh, well, I know, for example, of. Uh, students who live in the Gladstone School District but attend school in Portland. Because they're in a, uh, a, a family situation where parental custody is shared. So they go to the school where one parent lives and not the school where the other parent lives. Um, I just don't want to, um. Leave anybody out, on the other hand, I want that local connection, so I'm trying to figure out how best to word that to get that. What was your thought, Council Roberts?
This is a conversation that has been had, thankfully. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Administrator Betts, but the way we looked at this one was, say it is that case, we have, um, of high school age. They're, uh, eligible for our program in that criteria, but it is the case they go to Portland Public Schools. They live in this city, so our, our thought is that their investment is still here. So whether it may be the case that they attend Oregon City or they attend Putnam or PPS. While they still reside here, they have an investment in the city. The focus of this group is not only at a student level, although it's student age run. It is for the broader Gladstone community, and so their investment in that is still for the community.
So does that mean you would be willing to change the language that specifies Gladstone High School to just say attends? A public or private high school?
I believe the language as is, the way I read it, is broad enough. Members of the youth couns- members of the youth council shall be high school students at the time of swearing in. And shall reside within the city limits of Gladstone.
Oh, you've got and/or, and/or, okay. Okay, so somebody who lives outside the city and attends Gladstone could be the or equivalent.
That was something we redrafted.
Okay, all right, thank you, that, that helps it. So if we all kind of have that understanding of it, we'll understand the qualifications a little better, I appreciate that, thanks.
Well, I got one thing I guess.
Okay.
That you could just add, I mean, everything looks good to me, but, um. The Gladstone Youth Council, since this is a pilot program, the Gladstone Youth Council guidelines are in the first year are subject to change. And that way you get a, a feel of what.
That's really the sa- the case for everything, we, we amend, we amend some of those things.
And then, and then even if, if something did come up, you'd let them vote on it as a council, you know?
I think that one I'd refer to Jackie for, we talked about how. You know, being this, this is a pilot program, it's likely the case that we'll revisit this language as we come up with things that will change. How do we land on that and proceed?
Yeah, and I think what we would do after the first year, because quite frankly, these leaders might have suggestions for changing too. We would just need to come back and amend the ordinance at a later date to reflect what we're doing there. And, you know, to answer your question, if we got eight applicants. And Counselor Roberts and I interviewed them, there's nothing to say we wouldn't come back to you and say we should take all eight. We, we, we are trying to be flexible with what we know right now. Um, but I, I, I can add something. In regards to homeschooled equivalent in the city limits if that is not reading clear. That was one comment that you had made, Counselor Garlington, that the homeschooled equivalent needs to be in the city limits. So if, if you're reading it that it's not clear that way, we can add language for that.
Okay. One other thing, um, I see this, um, performing a lot of functions. One is sort of educational, uh, they can develop a better understanding of how government works by participating in it.
Correct.
Um, it, in that sense, it's different from an advisory group, uh. Which is what we have a lot of in our city already, they are, they are functioning as, as advisors to the city council. Um, I'm only wondering whether we need to have the open meeting laws and public meeting laws. Apply to this group, because I can foresee a situation, well. Yeah, all of us go attend, occasionally attend social events and things in the community. Uh, where a quorum of us is present, we're not always seeing each other or talking to each other while we're there. Uh, like the fundraiser at the, at the High Rocks Restaurant for the food pantry. I think at least four of us happened to be there, but we hardly, other than waving hi, we didn't talk to each other about anything. So we didn't violate any rules there, but I can see it far more likely that this group. Four will sit down for lunch together someday at school because they, that's what they do. They're, they're all seniors eating lunch at the same time and they see each other. And I don't want to have people saying, you know, you're violating public meeting laws by talking about this. Um, so what was, what was into the conversation about that? Can we, if we say that is primarily an educational exposure, uh, exposure to government. Um, you know, local and state government, I saw the League of Oregon Cities newsletter just had a big article. About some of these youth councils in other cities that we've heard from already, traveling to Salem, presenting, uh, you know, testimony on, on bills. That they want to see passed that concern them. Um, the, the educational function may be as important as anything else. Um, but I don't want to bypass state law on, on a committee appointed by a council. But, um, I just want to hear from other people on this issue, I guess.
Well, I, I was just going to go back to A just for a second because I don't even know what was misunderstood. When I read it last night and I read it again today, it was, if not even look at it, you live in Gladstone or you go to Gladstone High School? If you're homeschooled outside of Gladstone, you don't go to Gladstone High School and you're not in Gladstone.
Yeah, I think.
It was read real simple.
I missed, I missed the and/or part, I thought, I thought because it mentioned a specific high school.
Oh, yeah.
We were excluding other high schools.
No, I just, that's what I thought, I thought that was written sort of well, you know what I mean? Because I was like, yeah, you, you can't, you know, you live here or you go to high school, Gladstone High School.
And I think that's what Luke said, that's why they, they, they red, redlined it and then talked about it and they came up with good language. And I just didn't, you know, I, I had my own bias in one way and didn't realize that they had taken care of.
Mayor Milch, to, to answer your public meeting laws question, you will be adopting an ordinance. Creating a new board.
Okay.
So their first meeting, they would get a lesson about public meeting laws.
All right.
Now, are we going to have the IT manager police monitoring their cell phones or? Where they're eating lunch, no, but I think that's part of the learning process is, is knowing how to have an official meeting. We will be taking minutes and recording them. Um, so public meeting laws will be in effect, uh, for this committee.
Okay, and, and you make a good point, learning about that, the way all of us have had to learn about it. Is part of that educational process, so.
Yes.
Um, all right, uh, and if they understand that from the beginning, we'll, we'll hope that. Uh, they, as well as us, will be, we've had city councillors that didn't even follow that.
Well, part of that will be on us to flush out during the interview. You know, there's going to be like six questions for the application and then that will be sent to Counselor Huckabee. Counselor Roberts and myself, and then when we interview them, we're going to learn more about, well, what are your other commitments? Are you sure you can commit to a full school year to this? And so a lot of that, I think, can get flushed out in the interview process.
Very good. Yeah, and I think it was helpful to get that in, input from the principal of the school too, because they understand those kinds of commitments. Um, i- it's like anything else, the people who volunteer the most are often the people who, who do a lot. They're already motivated to do a lot of things, so we're going to see band members and maybe sports. People and kids that are strong, taking advanced placement courses. And I know from having grandkids in high school and having been in high school once myself in a previous century. Uh, it, it's hard to balance all those things. But the kids who, who make a point of balancing them are often the ones who can bring the most to their participation, so that's good.
And I'm looking forward to our partnership with the high school because they're willing to infuse the recruitment flyer. Into their system through Google Slides, through making sure it's on their social media platforms. And the greatest one I learned is that they have what's called teasers at lunchtime. Where you can go talk about something for five or 10 minutes and Marcy doesn't know it yet, but she will be attending a teaser. At the Gladstone High School to present this program to them, so they are invested too into trying to recruit and retain. Uh, youth that want to be involved, that aren't necessarily involved with student body, um, activities there. And we also learned that this type of experience will be valuable as they fill out scholarship applications in their careers. Volunteering for a government youth council.
Well, and one of the things I learned from that article in the, in the League of Oregon Cities newsletter was, uh, they could really make a difference at the state level. Uh, uh, particularly if they, uh, uh, attend these conferences with other youth councils from other cities. Uh, they will become a collective voice, uh, for young people on issues that affect them and affect the future of the state. So, um, I, I think they can perform a very important function, uh, not just for Gladstone, but for, uh, you know, youth in general. I, I'm excited.
One more question, you bring that up about, uh, attending, like, so you get these youth councils that want to go like to Salem or, you know, day. Do, does the city pay for that? Does the school pay for the house that worked?
No, the city is committed and I think that's an excellent, uh, example of collaboration. And, and I'm sure that Counselor Roberts would call on a couple more of his elected officials if we were going to take them up to the Capitol during City Hall Day. That that is something that I, I think we would encourage them to go.
All right.
Circle back a little.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, would you consider changing that second to additional and why wouldn't you?
Membership E.
Yeah, and I'm all for listening to your thought process here.
Would you restate your point, please?
So instead of saying reappointed for a second term, using reappointed for an additional term. Which wouldn't, which would make it so that it didn't limit your, the council liaison and city managers or city. Administrator, you're, you know, being able to move somebody along through the years. Rather than just a second, because it sounds like it would limit your decision there.
Were you contemplating any kind of a term limit that you could only do it for two years?
Not that, I'm just trying to save some time on our.
No, no, but, no, I was asking, asking Counselor Roberts because he said second.
Oh.
Rather than additional, which could be third or fourth, if somebody could start as a freshman and stayed on it as a senior. So, um, I don't remember if, if any of the other cities said you could only do it for two years and then you had to make room for somebody else. Uh, or if you had considered, uh, any kind of limitation like that.
I don't think we were looking to push forward with any sort of term limit.
Okay.
Ultimately, you know, if we get someone at a freshman level, it's the same way with those of us up here. Some of you have three years of experience, some of us have one year of experience, and so we may all have heard about the unidirectional flushing for the first time. But Greg and Mindy, you may know more about something than Michael and I do sitting here, Vanessa and, uh, Sierra and Veronica. So ultimately, I think the longer we can have them on there, the greater investment they have, the more knowledge they have. We'll have these informational sessions, so they're going to learn about a lot of things.
Mm-hmm.
So that, you know, increases their knowledge base the longer they're there. I see no issue with changing that to additional.
Well, I just, I, I'm sure you guys will have another conversation about this. I just wanted to, was wondering about the thought process on that. And then, I'm not sure, I'm just going to ask it out loud, can you ask kids for their grades?
So.
Did you wonder about that too?
We, we had a discussion about that and the way that will look is, uh, the principal and I at the high school will have a conversation. And she'll say, Timmy is good to go or Timmy is not good to go.
Okay.
And so that's about the extent of that conversation.
Got it.
And it, it, it's similar, I think with, is it with sports where you also have to maintain a certain GPA sometimes?
That is correct, certainly, Gladstone, I think it's a minimum of two point five.
Okay.
And we don't have a GPA requirement in here, we just wanted to do the thumbs up, thumbs down.
Okay, very good.
Okay. And we are looking at, uh, targeting eighth graders this year as well because they will be freshmen when we start this. And the principal said there is an eighth grade orientation coming up in April. So we can send the flyer and encourage them to also apply.
So this is an orientation for eighth graders who'll be going on to ninth grade, uh, very good. So, uh, uh, Marcy will have to, uh.
Yes.
She'll have to be a teaser in, uh, at the, at the Cracksburger as well. Um, I appreciate the input, I, I, I think you, you gave us a pretty solid, um, uh, plan here. Uh, one of those things that comes out of a group effort and the little bit of additional input we had tonight. I think we're, uh, you know, it helped you, it helped to clarify that you had gone over some of these things and considered them already. Um, so I'm happy to be moving in this direction, so you heard some of the discussion, took some notes. Uh, if we make some minor changes, we'll be ready to have something come to us at a future meeting.
Can I get just one clarification? I understand we're changing, uh, the second term to an additional term. Did we come to an agreement on the members in section A that that language is okay or are we changing that language?
Well, I, I understand what Counselor, uh, Greg Alexander is saying, I'm sorry, I'm just, my brain sometimes. Um, is saying, but you could almost remove the homeschool equivalent. Because we'll basically take anyone who lives in Gladstone or goes to Gladstone High School.
That's how I read it, that's how I read it.
So even if you're homeschooled, you're homeschooled within the city limits of Gladstone or your address is in Gladstone, so.
I don't want anybody who's unschooled completely. Um, I don't know that there is that, but, uh, I keep reading about enrollments in schools have dropped in Oregon during the pandemic. And a lot of those students completely vanish from school systems altogether. Uh, so I think saying homeschooled, uh, at least implies that we want them in some kind of a schooling environment.
Okay.
And I think to expand on that, because we also learned this at our meeting, that there is a Clackamas County ESD homeschool coordinator. That would help recruit, so there is an actual homeschool network that we could tap into. So I think it's important to leave the homeschool equivalent in there.
Okay.
All right.
We really did learn a lot at that meeting with the high school administrator and, uh, leadership advisor. Uh, they were able to key us in on a lot of information, point us in some directions, but also let us know that they're very happy to see that we're doing this. Um, ultimately, you know, it is something we want to clarify that this is a city function, it's sep- it, it functions separate entirely of the school. However, we're going to have some crossover and we're looking for, uh, their feedback when it comes time to do interviews, because they know the kids better than anyone else. We are, of course, asking that we receive information kind of on whether Timmy is doing good in school. But ultimately, this is something that's going to be separate of them, however, they're very happy to support us, they've talked about all the ways they're going to publicize this. Um, so I'm very happy that this will be a partnership, but also a separate partnership, so I'm very happy to see this moving forward.
Thanks for all of your work, wow, this is great.
Counselor Robert, I mean, Counselor Riekel and Counselor Cook, you have, both have younger children than high school age right now. But I wonder if you had any additional thoughts or. But I wonder if you had any additional thoughts or comments that you wanted to share uh on this process or the language that we've been presented?
I feel like for the most part, the language is great. I, that section A on the membership, I can see where at one point it feels real clear and then at another point it kind of feel, it it's a little clunky. I don't know. I I'm sure that's a technical term, but I wonder almost instead of saying a homeschool equivalent, if we say I mean, I don't know, because I'm thinking about that private school aspect and that I, I don't know. I maybe, I know that Counselor Robertson, Counselor Huckabee and Jackie have worked very hard to put this together, so I am totally trusting that this will work. It just, it just, it does feel a little clunky. I am very excited to hear that there will be some kind of outreach to the middle school um and the eighth graders because I feel like the the middle school needs some, needs some uplifting and let's help those kids transition into high school. Because that's, I remember way too clearly, that was a difficult time for me. So having, you know, outreach from the city on some of this stuff is is cool. I'm really excited. This is fantastic.
All right, thank you. Counselor Cook, any comments?
No, I think uh my only comment is that I don't have to make any comments because I think the uh the language here is really uh well thought through. Um, you know, we've had several work sessions where we've heard from um youth councils in neighboring communities. And I think you can see that in um in this document here, I can definitely tell that um Counselors Roberts, um Huckabee and Administrator Betz pulled from all of that information that we learned from our neighboring communities. Um, and yeah, I think it looks really clean. I think it makes a lot of sense and um I'm really excited to see this just uh come to life.
All right, very good. We've heard from everyone, uh except Counselor Huckabee, who we heard from in preparation of this. So um, I think we're, you know, we kind of understand where we are. Thanks again for preparing us and for for you know, recognizing the need to go through as a work session because now that we're kind of all on the same page, I think we'll come back with something we can all uh support. So uh we'll, we'll leave that to staff to do. Um, I'm excited to hear uh you're already envisioning the way staff will be involved in this. I don't want it to take more time and more budget because we had not planned uh, you know, for that in advance. But um I'm willing to be involved to whatever degree I can myself, and I hope that all of us will be supportive of this effort and want to make it succeed. So that if in the future we do decide to budget more for it or uh designate staff time for it, that that will be time well spent and money well spent on something of value to the whole community. So is there anything else uh from council members tonight? Counselor Roberts?
I have one point. I'd like to ask the council if there's a consensus if after our uh March twelfth meeting, I can then subsequently attend the school board meeting the following evening to show them a hopefully approved ordinance and represent the city as an individual city councillor, if there were any conflicts or anything to arise from.
No, I I think you could be a very good representative for that and uh sign up in advance. Um, well, they may have changed their sign up in advance policies, but.
Promise to follow all the rules.
Follow whatever the rules they have for for speaking or even get on their agenda if they'd, if they'd uh want that. So.
That is the plan.
Okay.
And you could always get on their agenda and say, I I not ready and have you better to do it.
There you go. Thank you.
All right. Well, with no other uh business before us, um I declare us adjourned at seven oh four P M.